This conference will now be recorded.
All right, it's seven o'clock. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the January 11th, 2022, Tenino City Council Work Session. On the agenda for the work session we have tonight is to discuss the CDBG memorandum of understanding between all partners. Just reading off the work session notes, this document outlines the process for how the community development block grant funds will be allocated over the next three years. So Thurston County is an entitlement county for CDBG funds, our federal funds, and Thurston County has chosen to become an entitlement county, which means that they get, instead of all of the jurisdictions being able to independently, and most people already know this, but I'm just going to give a backstory, instead of all the jurisdiction being able to independently apply to the feds for community development block grant funds and say make you eligible for lots in, you know, five, six million dollars, Thurston County chose to around 10 years ago, become an entitlement county, which means it gets an allotment every year to where we don't apply, it just comes our way. And I want to say it's a little over a million dollars a year. And then we signed a memorandum of understanding with all the jurisdictions that, with the exception of Olympia, because Olympia is its own entitlement and agency, to rotate through the various jurisdictions based kind of on size. And so it's a three-year rotation, and one year, Lacy gets it, the next year, Tom Water gets it, and then the third year, Yelm, Rainier, Bucona, Tenino, all lumped together, divided up amongst ourselves. It's been a good program so far. Initially, when it kind of first came out, then we've had, I think, two rounds that we've been eligible for. First round, Tenino got a pittance. That was prior to my administration, and it was kind of in the crazy days. And I think Tenino ended up getting something like $20,000 to build a sidewalk. But that's neither here nor there. The next time came around, and this will be our fourth time, actually. The next time came around, and I made kind of a deal with Rainier Bucona, Rainier Bucona Yelm, to where, because Yelm had got everything the previous round, we would, we would let Bucona get a significant amount to do, to replace some asbestos piping. And then Rainier got a bunch of money for tips to loop to redo some streets. In exchange, that the following year, Tenino would get the lion's share to do our project. I want to say the quarry pool, if I remember correctly. That came around, and we go into the negotiations, and the negotiations are the mayors, the South County mayors, and then all of a sudden, the county was sending a rep in there, and the county kind of like, because they hadn't been a part of the discussions before, they kind of went in and kind of bullied us out on us getting the funding that we had been kind of negotiated in the past. So we ended up getting a smaller amount for the quarry pool. That made it harder for us to get out the contracts and do everything that we needed to do. But we are starting to fund that project, what we're calling Phase One of the quarry pool, this year. We just signed a contract on it. If I can go into the CDBG negotiations again and say, hey, you know, we got shorted on our project, we're just getting started, I'd like another, you know, whatever we need to complete, you know, the quarry pool Phase One is going to significantly redo the kiddie pool side. But I want to also, for us to also be able to put in some additional, like enrichment opportunities, some splash pad stuff, and then also work on the lakeside and get, you know, some improvements done there to make it to where it's more accessible, it's a little cleaner looking, and a little, you know, kind of a little more up to snuff. So that is my plan to go in there and ask for that. The MOU, the added flavor to the MOU this year is that several, and it started mostly with Lacy and the county, they asked that we set aside a portion of our CDBG funds, when it comes to us, the third year, for housing-related projects. So that was a big negotiation, because they were asking for quite a bit, and we got, you know, we were, you know, we tried to explain to them that this is really one of our only, one of our best opportunities to get funds to do like community building projects. And, you know, kind of, you know, things are a little more like economic development focused, instead of just housing focused. And, you know, we felt like they were kind of painting us with the same pictures they paint, you know, kind of they paint with in Lacy and Olympia, where, you know, they have specific issues regarding housing and things like that, that aren't necessarily things that we share exactly. And so there was some discussion of it. What you have before you is an updated MOU that reflects some of the decisions that were made in those discussions about how we want to continue the MOU and the CDBG program. So if we want to look through it, if you haven't had the opportunity to look through it, please do so. But if you also have any questions, now's a good time for that. Linda, what did you have?
Well, I wondered, I wondered if that, when we get whatever money we get, if it could be used to help, like that, the two derelict properties that are back on Lincoln, the two houses that have been sitting there, and the guy doesn't seem to have any money to do anything with them, if something-
We, so like, when I did the walkabout with the planning commission, he was with us-
Right.
And the issue wasn't money, the issue was just knowing how to navigate the development process.
Okay.
And Dan Penrose has said he would work with him. And really, the guy was very open to doing things there. He does, he does want to make some improvements there. But he flat out met with all of us and asked us what we wanted to see there. And the planning commission went over some different, you know, ideas, garden apartments, townhomes, you know, things of that nature. And the guy kind of, the guy walked away with a lot of great ideas.
Okay.
You know, like, you know, I don't, I don't think he's interested in like selling the city his property. But I mean, he's privately interested in development of the property.
Okay, well.
How quickly he moves on that, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I remember Ben met with him when he was our code enforcer, and he talked like the guy really wanted to fix the thing up, you know. And I just didn't know if there was any kind of help we could give him besides the planning commission or not.
Yeah. As far as giving him public funds, I mean, you would have to, I mean, I think you'd have to tie it into like, making it permanent affordable housing. If you, you know, when you bring in HUD money, you've got to make it to where it's, the house is all, the home is always occupied by people of, you know, that are, you know, have difficulty purchasing houses and stuff like that. I think this guy was looking, he's got a significant chunk of property. And after speaking with the planning commission, he seemed really open to kind of some bigger concepts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, I'll pull up the MOU.
Ready for me?
Go ahead. You got a question?
No statement. As you guys know, I've been on the Transportation Policy Board for a long, long time. What you're seeing here is just another attempt at reducing the amount of funds that we get. It started years ago because they got in a little bit of trouble for not distributing any funds at all to South County. And now they're trying to find ways to pull that money back to North County yet again. So we need to be really careful with this MOU.
Yeah. Well, and I, I felt like it was more like they were telling us what we should do. You know, like, because the money is still earmarked for South County, but it's them, you're putting a certain color on the money for what it can be used for. Which, I mean, that was my biggest gripe, was like, you know, I don't, I don't think it's right for North Thurston County to tell us what our problems are and how to solve our problems. Just leave it unencumbered and let us decide what to be done with it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the history of those two groups, TRPC and TPB. You know, it's come up in the past, why are we on there? And these are the things that are specifically why we're there, so that we can protect ourselves from what they try to do to us on a regular basis. Every couple of years, they come up with something new to say, well, you know, maybe you should do this, or maybe you should do that, or maybe, maybe we can use some of that money, or always finding, trying to find a way to dip into the CDBG grant money for us, or to try to control how we use it. That it's that, the history of those two groups. I just wanted everybody to know that.
I think as long as we have a good representation on that, whatever committee it is, and I think Wayne is the one to do that, I think that he'll do his best to protect our funds. I know that, so.
Yeah, my, so my goal, and you know, if council does not like the direction, you know, please let me know, is I would like to get more funds for the quarry pool project. Because once we start that project, we can, you know, we can, we can roll right into a Phase Two with the contractors already working. I just, we just have to secure some more funds. And it's, you know, it's like, we're just, we'd be, we'd be kind of flowing with the stream and the process already. There's work to be done there. Once they get started, it's easier to keep them going. And so that, that would be my, that is my intention.
The only thing I wanted everybody to understand is the history of TRPC and TPB. And that's why we sit there is to make sure that what they're doing, backhanded as it may be, or wordsmithing as they have their way of doing, it doesn't hurt the city of Tenino before it gets here.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Rachel, Jason, Elaine?
No. I'm just thinking it'd be nice to have it up and running by summer.
Oh, yeah. The contractor has told us that is the case. So I think, I think we're good there, barring the unforeseen.
Yes, because we're having Splash Bash in May.
Good. Okay. If we have nothing further for the work session, let's roll into reports, since we got time. Chamber of Commerce, Mr. George Sharp. George, I know you're there. All right. If he comes around, he's the next one, too.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my news off and my camera on. So Chamber of Commerce says our next meeting will be next Wednesday, and we're probably going to have a report from the Tenino Ranch. That's where our guest speaker, Easdepmy Von Moos, is going to be our speaker for that. So we're looking forward to finding out what their plans are and how they plan to open up, probably in April.
Good. EDC?
Yeah, I met that this month, W then X, next week.
Okay. Fire District 12.
Okay, I just want to do a little bragging on a couple of our guys, Chris Gray and Joe Ritchie. They received the Patriots Award from the Employee Support of the Guard and Reserve. But this is, when somebody comes off duty or is on reserve duty, they try to find ways to help these guys either retain their job so they don't lose it when they come back home, or just get them into something to begin with. And these two gentlemen here, again, Chris Gray and Joe Ritchie, they've been rather outstanding in helping some of our veterans as they come home, and some of our guardsmen. We have one that is out in overseas someplace right now. And the only way that you can get these awards is by one of the guardsmen or military people writing to this group and letting them know what's going on. They came down, it was a nice end to my chairmanship for the fire, for South Thurston Fire, to watch these guys get these awards from them because of somebody that's overseas. And when they come back, they know that they're going to have their position held and retained, and the help that they had to get into the position to start with. So I just wanted to brag on those two guys a little bit.
Okay. Is, do you know anything about the 911 outage?
No, I haven't heard anything. And we haven't heard anything at the, because on our next commissioner meeting, not South Thurston, but the actual association, is another week and a half away. So I haven't heard anything about an outage, a 911 outage.
Okay, well, allegedly, it's out right now, but, okay.
I haven't received any emails on it, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is anyone here from the library? I do not see Linda. Okay, let's go to museum.
I've got nothing. Well, there you go.
Jessica?
I'm here. I can do it.
All right.
I can't turn my camera on, though, because my internet connection doesn't like it when I turn my camera on. So the museum is open Fridays and Saturdays, noon to four. We were open in December and had open house events throughout the month and tried to make it, increase some of our winter traffic, because things slowed down when the weather's poor. And then this month, we have a meeting next week, I'm not really sure, for the Historical Society. I'm not really sure what's going to happen with that right now, because a couple of our members have COVID. So I don't, I mean, they're officers, and so that's going to affect whether we can make very big decisions. So it'll probably just be more informational. Let's see. Oh, today I did some history talks at the high school, and I'll be doing history talks next week at the middle school. So that's exciting. I'm hoping that that helps, that partnership with the schools grows, and that we can get more field trips to the museum and things like that, and really be fulfilling our mission of education.
That's excellent.
That's about all I've got.
What, so I'm assuming Lauren's wife, Shelley, that's one of the-
Yes, she's in, she's in the hospital. She's on a ventilator currently. So if you're praying people, please pray for her.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds rough. Please give Lauren our best if you speak to him.
I will.
All right. Tenino Community Service Center, is Jody with us? I do not, I think she is. No, that's Jen Sharber. Let's see.
Jody's here.
Jody, would you like to give a report?
It's not picking up on your mic. You can't hear anything you're saying.
She'll figure it out. Give her a second. All right, Jody, we're going to give you the, we're going to give you the hook. All right, you had your chance. Moving on, Arts Commission.
Mayor. Mayor, I hope to meet with you and Kayleen to figure out the final steps of getting Arts Commission up and running for the next meeting and bringing the people together.
Okay. All right. Civil Service has not met, the SOD Improvement Grant Review Committee.
Not much going on right now. I want to get a meeting together on a Saturday with the committee to discuss what we're moving forward, because we had two people that applied that did not use their grant. So we've got some money left from last year, and we have to figure out what we can do with that, so.
Okay. All right. Finance Committee, Planning Commission, Chief of Police. So we do not have the chief, so Hutch is done as interim chief. And we have on the agenda tonight confirmation of the gentleman who has been given a conditional offer. So we do not have a chief of police to give report. So we'll just move past that. But we do have our Director of Public Works with him.
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening. So Public Works has been pretty busy the last couple of weeks, you know, with the snow and the rain. There has been some flooding for us down on Houston Street and Park Street. There's been some, I think there was, I can't remember how many else on Houston Street, but there's quite a few on the corner from, from the corner from Fourth and Houston all the way down, it would be south. Got quite a bit of water down in that area. The Park Street, when we closed that street off too, for a little bit, the house on the corner of, sorry, that's one that's on Fourth and Park. So there's a lot of water coming out of that park this year with that rain, but not much we can do about it right in this moment in time. We're in the process of fixing some check valves. We have quite a few of them that have failed. Of course, they failed during the snow and rain. So we've been pumping sewers down every day, and that's been a struggle for us. But we've been, Monday, we started fixing those. We should have them all fixed by the end of the week. We're looking forward to, on a wastewater treatment plant, replacing the MBRs this month. And we just got done replacing the pre-air filters. Septic hauling and dumping is going well, as, you know, we're not, seem to be that busy at this time. But I think summertime will be a busy month for us, all summer. I've been working on our water report. I should have that done for you guys next month. And I'll plan on doing, the Six Year Street Plan, also have that finished early and done for next month. Other than that, anybody got any questions?
Troy, are you familiar with the water flow from the park on down to Houston Street? Does that all connect together?
Well, it kind of does. So over there off of Fourth and Park, there's three dry wells there that, once those get overwhelmed and everything, and then the water will shoot underground or sheet underground, all the way down into Houston Street, and that's where it shows itself. And that's where all that water came from.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was told. So I just wanted to make sure that was, I was told, right?
You were. And so what happens is, Scattered Creek, when that builds up, those drains down there were designed to flow out into Scattered Creek. But once Scattered Creek gets so high, that water has nowhere to go.
Oh, yeah.
And that's-
We had our own waterfront property, finally.
Yeah, you did. A lot of people did down there. And sandbags were, we had, luckily, we had a pallet of sandbags that were left over a couple of years ago that we got from somewhere, I can't remember where. And we had quite a bit of sand there. So we kind of set up a little station for people to come in and get sandbags. And, you know, they took probably, I'm guessing I had 20 yards dumped, and I probably have maybe five left over. So people were busy doing sandbags.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, thank you for all that.
Yeah. And I'm looking into right now, I showed Wayne some pictures of some sandbag loaders that we could actually use a machine to use this, you know, dump the sand into these things, and it will, you know, bag it themselves, pretty much. And so-
Oh, that would be perfect. Once those bags get wet, they rip easy.
Yeah, exactly. We might want to look into getting some different bags also. Because I'm sure this is going to happen again.
Oh, yeah.
Potholes. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of them now.
I know. And we just got a delivery of Easy Street. So, you know, like I said, we've been busy doing these check valves. And we're going to hit the one there on Old Highway 99, Brad the Bridge, first thing in the morning.
Yeah, that one's brutal.
That one is bad. And so we'll get that one first thing. But the other ones are not really scheduled until I get these check valves taken care of, because those have been in the pain in our neck. So but soon as that stuff gets done, we will hit the potholes. We filled in the one on the Park Street that we had a complaint about, but that one came back. It just keeps coming back and back. But with the snow and the amount of rain we've got, and the traffic nowadays on Park Street, it's just, it's hard to maintain that, that street when they weren't designed for this much traffic. So and the excessive speed that people do down that street is crazy. So, yeah, we're going to have to start fixing those the right way and spend some money. But I can probably do just a couple of them, you know, for now. But this summer, we're going to have to hit a lot of them that are really bad. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to City Planner. No, a building official. Is Rainy here? I don't think so. Do not see him on the list. Okay, City Attorney, not present. Clerk Treasurer, you have two minutes. Now you have one minute. Nobody can hear you, Kayleen.
She didn't hear a thing you're saying.
All right, we'll try again during the meeting. My report, I'll keep it short since we're, we're moving along here. I met with Representative Abarno today. We talked about the Ag Park budget, capital budget request. We talked about the ones we're submitting for our, some playground equipment upgrades. Not sure exactly how much money is going to be available in the capital budget. He said somewhere between $85 million to $150 million, which is pretty good. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to do our best to get some funds for the city of Tenino. Other than that, you know, we've been moving forward with construction. Some, you know, we have taken some time off, kind of, things have kind of slowed down after, you know, after Christmas, during the New Year's. So there's not a whole lot to report. Several of the meetings that I would typically attend, they were postponed for the holiday season. So, you know, things have been fairly chill, aside from the, you know, weather events that we've had. Everybody knows we had a pretty good snowstorm. That brought some, you know, some additional surprises to the city. Our staff were out, you know, they plowed when they could. When the roads are covered in ice, you don't plow, you sand. So they were sanding. And we, like Troy said, we made a sandbag station available to folks, not just in Tenino, but from all over for the flooding. And, and we've been working on that, trying to keep an eye on, on things. So it is 7:30 now, and we- And, and we've been working on that, trying to keep an eye on, on things. So it is 7:30 now, and we will move into the regular City Council meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the January 11th, 2022, Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
States America and to the Republic.
One nation, under God. All right, we have an agenda before us needing approval.
Move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the meeting minutes for 12:14, 2021?
The move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for 12:14, 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Passes. Jody, that's, that's your microphone that's catching the, the wind sound. Consent calendar. We have a consent calendar consisting of December 30th, 2021, through January 11th, 2022. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $7,692.15. Claims checks number 30309 through 30342, and EFTs in the amount of $334,529.85, for a grand total of $342,222. Along with liquor cannabis license renewals for Los Compadres Mexican Restaurant and Tenino 76 Food Mart. The, the large dollar amount is due to us paying some of the construction bills that are funded through the, the capital, the state capital budget grant for the City Hall renovations.
Move approval.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to Presentations, Oaths of Office for Council Members Lawton, O'Callahan, and Godavec.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I've already been sworn in.
Correct.
Okay.
So you can participate if you'd like, but I know you're, you're already blessed. So. Let me, uh. Let's see. All right, we'll do this all at once. So Jason, Linda, and O'Callahan, if you'd like, but you don't have to since you've already done it. Would you please repeat after me? Aye. State your name.
Jason Lawton.
Linda Godavec.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the Office of Council Member.
The duties of the Office of Council Member.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law.
And the best of my.
Best of my ability.
All right, your oaths are signed and ready for you to come and sign at City Hall. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
That brings us to public comment period. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please step forward and let us know at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. Hearing none, going once, going twice, moving on. That brings us to Proclamations, Old Business, New Business. Quarry House CDVG Agreement. This is for the council review and approve the Quarry House CDVG Agreement. This is a con, this is an agreement with the county for the CDVG funds to be made available for the Quarry House renovation.
Just so everybody that's listening knows that this is money that's already been allocated before.
Yes.
Move approval.
We are, we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is Confirmation of Tenino Police Chief Robert Autorer. So we've held an extent, and I spoke to council about this quite a bit, and so has Interim Chief Hutchings. After an extensive hiring process, we made a conditional offer to Robert Autorer to be the Tenino Police Chief. Prior to his official employment, we require council confirmation, so at this time, I would like to ask the council to make a motion to confirm Robert Autorer as the City of Tenino Chief of Police.
The move.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. I look forward to introducing him to you very shortly. He is not with us tonight, but he will be, if this motion passes, he'll be starting 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. Is there any discussion?
One of the things I believe I saw on his resume was that he did, I'm not sure what, how to call it, the waste station stuff for trucks that pass through.
Did commercial inspections.
Yeah.
Commercial vehicle enforcement.
This is something that we've been looking at for at least 15 years, probably longer. Will we be able to move forward with this finally?
Yep, I've already discussed this with him, and he's putting a plan together.
Good, thank you.
So when he comes through the next meeting, you'll be able to ask him about his plan and what he wants to do and how he's gonna do it, so, and he'll have some answers for you.
Great. Wayne, what does that mean, vehicle inspections?
Commercial vehicle enforcement, making sure that like semi-trucks and commercial vehicles are following all the laws and rules.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember.
Sweet, she's playing.
Yeah, I was gonna say Chief Swing was looking into this too.
Exactly.
Yep. This guy has a background in it, so I'm, I'm glad that he's gonna be bringing that, that kind of to the, you know, he's bringing that tool to our, to us, to our city. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We are now, we are reviewing, we're just gonna kind of talk about and look at committee assignments. So we don't need to make decisions tonight. I just wanted to get this in front of you guys, you all, so for any new council members, it is, it is typical, or, you know, kind of standard customary, what have you, that we also participate not only in our city government, but in some of the regional committees. Some of these are local, some of these are at the county level. Some of them are with different agencies, like, you know, like I'm on the EDC board, and the EDC is not, is kind of a nonprofit that is, is kind of a non-governmental agency, but kind of a, kind of a governmental agency. Jason Lawton has served on Be That. It's a local organization that promotes healthy living for families and children in Tenino and Bucauda. There's the museum, TCOM, there's a few different boards. And, you know, council, you don't, you're not required, and, you know, we can't require you to do anything, but we do like it when council members participate in kind of these extracurricular things. So I would like council to take a look and see if there's anything that they're interested in, and then we can discuss if there's any availability in that thing that they're interested in. Like for one, John O'Callahan has been the alternate for TRPC, and Cutter was our first up. Council member O'Callahan and I today talked, and he asked if he could serve as our primary for TRPC, which is, it's a pretty important council, and yeah, that seems like a great thing for him to jump in on. So we would pencil him on that, and we would ask council at the next meeting, once we've got those names plugged in, we would give an opportunity for council to take a vote on it and pass the committee and commission appointments. You will be compensated if you do attend an extra meeting, so this is kind of an aside. Council is, and I, I think I discussed this with Lawton, and I, I'm not sure if it was entirely clear. You, you're compensated for each of the council meetings that you go to, but if you do go to some of these extra meetings, you will receive an additional stipend. It's, it's not a lot, but it covers gas, it'll cover a little bit of your time, and if you have any questions about that further, you can speak to myself or Kayleen. But this is for you guys to look at. If there's anything that you're interested in, please send an email, call me, let me know, and, and we'll get this filled out, and we will take a, take some action on it at the next meeting. Is there any, any questions?
No, but I can tell you right now, including TRPC, I'm happy with everything else that I've got here.
Okay, good. Okay. Moving along. Amendment number three, City Hall, oh, I lost it. Amendment number three. Where'd it go? City Hall renovations. Amendment number three modifies the authorization 2019-001 for engineering service between Gibson Olsen, Inc. and the City of Tenino, Washington, executed January 18th, 2019, for a project known as the City Hall Renovation Project. So we have to do some shifting around of funds to make sure that Gibson Olsen is still getting paid for managing this project. And this is all within the capital facility or capital, state capital budget grant that we've got.
So are you looking for your approval?
Yep, we're asking for most of your approval amendment number three on the city hall renovation.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, if you guys haven't gone up and take a look, you ought to do it.
Yep, I got to give Council Member O'Callahan a tour today. Did you have any, any thoughts or comments on what we gotten done so far?
It's, it's just gorgeous. One of the nice things that's gonna work for the audience is instead of just having a screen in the back where everybody would have to turn around, there's gonna be another one up front, so we'll have two different screens. It's one for us to see and one for them to see, so that's gonna, I think that's gonna work out really well for everybody. We talked about the, the deck of the floor. The only thing I think that would have made that look really nice is if you know, loggers that used to come in wearing their logging boots and all the little holes that were left in the, in the floor, like over at the sandstone were there, but they don't have any of that. But it's, it really is something to take a look at, and the lighting is a whole lot better as well.
Thank you, Council Member O'Callahan.
You're welcome.
That was, I'm glad we got to go show it off. I can't wait to show it off to everybody. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings up Community Action Council Assistance Agreement. Community Action Council Lewis, Lewis Mason and Thurston Counties will be administering low-income home water assistance program soon. This program specifically addresses water customers whose income is at or below 150% of the federal poverty guidelines and whose water and/or sewer wastewater service is disconnected or are facing imminent disconnection. LEWAP is designed to assist customers with a grant of up to $2,500 in assistance to bring their accounts to a zero balance. In order to participate, water vendors are required to complete the attached vendor agreement and return it to Community Action Council of Lewis Mason Thurston as soon as possible. Once we have the vendor agreements in place and receive the funding, we can begin serving customers who meet the above criteria. We are asking for council to move to approve the Community Action Council Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
How, how does a person know that this is available to them?
Well, one thing is we talk about it in the meeting. This is a public meeting, and then we have the, the newspaper is present at our meeting, and he reports it in the newspaper. We put things on Facebook. We put things, we, we stuff envelope, we stuff mailers in the water bills typically for anything big like this. And then the Community Action Council will send out notices as well.
Okay. Just was curious, thank you.
And, and also our staff, they, and, you know, in a lot of instances like this, they will know customers that would be, you know, who may be eligible, so there's also that one-on-one interaction that, that always happens as well.
Yeah, those that need help.
Yep, we do our, we definitely do our best. All right, any further discussion? Good question. Thank you, Elaine. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to Amendment 2022 to the Fee Schedule, Updated Septage Receiving Costs. Jen, did you want to talk about this, or Kayleen? We're having some issues with Kayleen's microphone.
If you can't hear Kayleen, I'm happy to say what I know. We started septic receiving just at the end of September, beginning of October, and we started at 12 cents at the gallon. We were kind of just seeing how it would go. It's going great. We're upping it to 14 cents, and that's it. They've, they've received notice, all the companies that have been dumping with us, and they're fine with it. We sell lower rates than almost everywhere else, so.
And when we first started kind of onboarding some of the different septic, septic haulers, we, we let them know that there was kind of a, a beginning rate that we're starting out with, trying to get a feel for things. And as we worked kinks out, we would be going to a more, you know, more, a rate a little closer to the, kind of the competitors, and things are going well. So all those, hearing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Nobody motion to accept.
Oh, well, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the amended fee schedule for 2022?
The move.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the amended fee schedule for 2022. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to Ordinance 919, Home Fund Second Reading. We've had quite a bit of discussion about this. We've talked about this at length over the last couple of months. This is an ordinance that would establish a home fund for the City of Tenino. This would impose an additional local sales tax and use of that tax of 1/10 of 1% of housing-related services and provide for other matters relating thereto, properly permitted as authorized by RCW 82-14-530. So we are asking for council to move to approve this as the second reading and adoption to Ordinance 919.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I've said lots of stuff on this.
Thank you.
Could say more if you want.
No, that's okay.
All right, we'll close debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion, let's, uh, let it, I wasn't, do we have one, how many aye? Raise your hand if you are an aye. Okay, so three, two. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. That brings us to reports. We left, uh, we had almost all of them, except we missed the clerk treasurer. Did you get, have we got a mic working yet?
No.
Does not look like it. All right, we'll keep going. Uh, Be That.
Uh, no report. They were on break.
Okay. CIP. Solid Waste Advisory Board. Steady.
Our next meeting will be on, uh, Friday, the third Friday of the month will be the 21st. But we're gonna have our research director from the Thurston EDC come and talk about what the research capabilities of the EDC are and how we can serve each one of our communities.
Very cool.
George, I owe you an apology. When I got home from work, I sat down and passed out, so I missed the meeting. Sorry about that.
Tenino School Board.
So the Tenino School Board has agreed to place a technology and safety replacement levy proposal to be voted on February 8th in the spec, special elections ballot. So the capital levies are a primary source of funding for construction and renovations, uh, safety and security, building improvements and maintenance, classroom technology and, um, the basic technology infrastructures. So the reason for this to be on the ballot, the reason why they need the levy is, um, the date to file the continuous levy flow was missed. So they're actually looking at a gap in financial aid. So, um, what that kind of means as far as the community is the property owners will have no, um, no, no leveled capital taxes. I was trying to find the word. Sorry. No leveled capital taxes in 2022. Um, but there will be in a tax assessment in 2023 in the calendar year if this does pass. So, um, I mean, it, it's a pretty important one. I'm always an advocate for the schools, but, um, I mean, in terms of, you know, what they need this for. So the reason, um, they want to get this out is because the ballot is actually going to be coming out soon. So, um, an email was sent out to us. I know I saw it in council. Everybody, I think, was attached to it from the Citizens for Schools. Um, they're needing volunteers as well. So they're actually, um, they have three positions available. They have a chair, a co-chair and a treasurer that they're looking to fill spots for. And any volunteers that would be willing to hold signs, pass flyers out, um, or sending info, info through the mail. So the primary contact for that is Deb Reich, Reicholdurfer.
We call her Deb Alphabet.
I know.
That's what she goes by, Deb Alphabet, cause the entire alphabet is her.
I tried so hard to say her name. I, I know her. I talk to her all the time. But I tried so hard to remember that, so.
It's Deb Reicholdurfer and it's Tongor Otakroko.
Oh gosh, I know. That's a, that's a hard one, but she's great. And, um, if you need additional information or if you want to volunteer, so, um, you know, those that live in the district, those who have kids that go to the district, keep a lookout for the ballot. And, um, additional information is also on the website at the district and on their Facebook page. So that's all for the district.
Thank you, Rachel.
Mr. Mayor, you wanted to backtrack to Jody, see if she can get in yet?
Jody Stoltz.
So I've changed some things. So can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you now?
Loud and clear.
So we are going to have a, uh, kid vaccination clinic at the quarry house this weekend. Um, the times are 10 to 2:00 and this is for ages five to 11 only. So no adults, no, nothing, just, it's just for the kids.
Okay.
And.
What day is that?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Did you say nine to 11, Jody?
Uh, 10 to 2:00.
10 to 2:00, okay.
Yeah, that was off, Linda. Just saying.
That's the way it goes.
It, it's all good. So you can, um, pre-register through the flyer that is on our page. Um, through Tenino Community Service Center. And, uh, that, that would be it. Unless somebody has any questions.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, TRPC, TPB.
TRPC is Friday, TPB is tomorrow morning.
Okay, public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the public, public, there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, now's your time to do so. Going once, going twice, moving on. Announcements.
Now, for the fire department, I don't know if I brought this up. Uh, we went through a, we're, we go through the rotation every year of having a new chairman. So I'm not chairman this year. It's Everett. He's gonna be our chairman. Uh, I'm, I've been bumped up from vice chair for the, uh, County Fire Association to the chairman on that. So we're getting a little representation out of that. Uh, one of the things that, uh, I've been pushing real hard is against, uh, 13, uh, was it 1310? Or 1319, the one that, uh, restricts police and fire from a lot of the stuff that we normally would do and puts everybody, you know, in, uh, excess danger. Uh, because the talk is, is that they just want to change some of the verbiage when it should just be thrown away. Go back to what we used to do. There was nothing wrong with it.
Agree.
Okay. Any other announcements?
I have a question.
Who's talking?
Elaine.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm not sure what the protocol is or what, but I've been approached by several people that I, some I don't even know who they are, um, but about the parking lot. And asking about if it was going to be finished with some kind of barrier around the ditch because of the amount of cars that have gone in to the flow.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I've been approached as well.
Yeah, and I, and I've, I've discussed it with Troy. Uh, Troy, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, Wayne.
Can you answer, uh, Elaine and John's question about?
Yes, um, the painting, where one won't happen until spring probably gets, we gotta have a couple of good days of weather. Um, we do have curbs, but, um, I want it painted first before we put curbs up, just so we put them in the right spot and don't have to move them. Um, there was some talk, I don't know if me and Wayne talked better or not, but, um, with other people that maybe fencing that area off, but, um, and then we'll be, you know, if something does, people still drive through, we've still gotta replace the fence and fix the fences, so. Um, yeah, the plan is to get it fixed, um, but it's just somewhat weather conducive.
Are you talking about, uh, kind of like the, the orange plastic fencing that you put up around stuff? So it's very visible.
And we could actually do the orange fencing around it. That would probably help out tremendously.
But as far as permanent, we would, we would be wanting to do something much more permanent. Uh, we, we really couldn't do anything when the snow was up, except put up some, some temporary tape and things like that. There were some barricades put up by Public Works just after we had some issues. But, uh, yeah, it, we're, we're kind of learning some of the deficiencies with the design and we're gonna work through them.
Is it gonna be angled parking or is it just, uh, straight in?
On the alleyway, it's angled and then the rest of it and the other part is straight in.
Okay. Well, at least this way, when, when we're asked again, we can tell them what's going on. Uh, but the, I think the orange fan, uh, the orange barrier that we have or we used to have, uh, for the park, uh, in the interim, until we can actually get there, would be good to put around those, because everybody can see them easily. I think the problem is that they couldn't see, uh, over the hood of the car and just accidentally went too far.
Yes, no, I think that's a good idea. We can put that up. Um, we'll try to put it up this week for sure.
Okay, I know you're busy and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Good suggestion, John.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other announcements or questions? Uh, I'd like to ask some, you know, city hall staff, the, the, the issue of the levy came up tonight, uh, from council member Davidson. So if staff could reach out to the school to see if there's a school representative or maybe a representative from, uh, the, uh, the campaign group that would like to come and give a presentation at a future council meeting, uh, I think that would be appreciated. So if, uh, if Kayleen could, Kayleen or somebody from the staff could take care of that, I think council, council, council will probably appreciate that.
Um, I think Clint Endicott would like probably to do that, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let's reach out to Clint and invite him to a, uh, upcoming council meeting. With that, any, any further announcements? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned.
Good night. Motion.
Aye.
Y'all have a good night. Happy New Year.